All right, welcome back from our lunch break. We're going to move back to our timed items and we will move on to our 6.11, our 1:00 p.m. consideration of presentation by North Coast Opportunities, the Home Hardening Program, and this is sponsored by Supervisor Pyska.
All right, we have our update from NCO and yeah, both, yeah, come sit up here. And then we also have with us the Executive Director of the California Wildfire Mitigation Program too. So we're going to hear from both of them and I think. Yes? My microphone's on.
Oh, there you go.
And I think that Jay Lopez, you've met everyone except our Chair, Chair Crandall.
Hello, Jay.
So we have to get you out for a tour. You're the only one that hasn't been.
All right.
Anytime.
Well, thank you for having us. I know you guys Tuesdays are very busy. My name is Deanna Frenway. I'm the Program Manager for the Lake County Home Hardening Program with North Coast Opportunities. It's on, you just have to be. Have to pay attention where I'm talking. But just again, just want to thank you guys for your time. I know your Tuesdays are incredibly busy. I was here about a year and a half ago and told you guys I would be back with an update as construction started and we started moving through the program. But before I dive in, I'd like to introduce you to Jay Lopez, one of our developing partners with CalOES. I'll let him take it away for a bit.
Excellent. Pleasure to be here. It's always a wonderful drive to come to Lake County. Never say no when Lake County calls and so appreciate here and my honor to present to you. Give you a quick background on the California Wildfire Mitigation Program. So we can go to the next slide. So one of the things that we learned is that we have to have a plan. So we've got to stop hoping and keep working to make a difference next. The California Wildfire Mitigation Program was born of the legislature, the state legislature, Assembly Bill 38 in 2019 that required CalFire and CalOES to form a joint powers authority to create a program that will help mitigate homes themselves. We have done projects around the homes. We have done projects in the defensible space, but never the home itself. So this program, this authority was created in 2021. The board was formed in 2022 and the first grant, which was Lake County, in 2023. So in a matter of time, we're doing quite a bit in very little time. Next. Appears to be a lot of time, but we're doing quite a bit of work in FEMA time to start in 2023 to have the first grant awarded and to have homes being done by 2024 is a great accomplishment. And that is all due to the fact that North Coast Opportunities hard work. So as I was saying, it's just a wildfire structure retrofit touching somebody home is a little different. They're just trimming up the plants around the house. So we're working out really hard and finding all the trials and revelations how to do this. Next slide. And the nice thing about this program is that we're developing a model that can be used statewide. So we have a report to present to this data assembly in 2028, but we plan to do it before that. And once we have a model, it's something that everybody can use. So you go to John and Betty right now, they're 75 years old and you ask them to wildfire retrofit their homes. They're going to say, what and where do I start? Or John and Betty, they are 25 years old and they just got married, bought their first home. You ask the same question, you get the same answer. So our job is to domestify that and makes it more easy to understand and implement. It's locally led and this is a great example. NCO is a great local community group that can handle this very nicely. What I like, we like about our program opens it up not only for cities and county, but also for groups like NCO. We receive money from the state and we provide the match for a FEMA grant. So that's something that alleviates the county, alleviates the cities, alleviates the groups and it makes it very democratic. So pretty much anybody that's engaged, willing to learn can do this program. And then it's a neighborhood and community wide. So it's not a house here and there. It's many homes right next to each other as we can. Next. And one thing, those are the areas that we work in throughout the state. Next. And one very important thing, this is not an isolated effort. It's very important for us to know that whatever we do is also works for somebody else. So we're working with the National Institute of Standards and Technologies, with the data that they have, with the Safer From Wildfires Department of Insurance. So all the mitigations that we do also can be used for somebody to obtain the benefits of the Safer From Wildfire program. Also for the wildfire per home, we're lining up our program with them. So you want to have a wildfire per home, I do on my own house and it works great because my insurance was kind of hinting that they were going to drop me, my houses against the forest. And once I had the wildfire per home, the discussion of being dropped stopped. So that's something that we line up with them, also with the California Department of Housing, headwater economics for the studies of what it takes to do and how much money it takes and see if we can drive the cost lower. Firewise USA, our goal is to, in the case of Kelseyville Riviera, is already firewise. But how to maintain it, all this work can count into maintaining the firewise designation in that area. And also we're starting to work with the Governor Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation to align our programs with them. They have quite a bit of programs that can benefit our residents with that. Next. And then the methodology, it just shows how we work. We do an assessment first to make sure that things are done to the hazard that is present to the house. So in one side of the house might be embers that you have and the other side might be embers and flame. So you've got to mitigate for both. Next. And we use the state treatments that we have, so zero, one, and two. Next. And this is some more retrofits that we do. We take it to the next level. In this case, it's a sidewall. The state only calls for six inches and Deanna is implementing up to two feet of hardening on that outer wall and also the material that is attached to it. It's important to modify it and make it less compostable. Next. We develop a minimal quality standards. That's a very important part of minimal quality standards is something that we can hand to a contractor and they know what code goes with it. The MQAs that we call, we develop with several groups that are experts on the matter. Starting from the State Fire Marshal and the people conducting the testing. But also we had four PhDs that have done quite a bit of studies in the United States on this. And this provides a very clear understanding for Deanna to provide to the property owner and the contractor on what's going to happen in their home. So having that minimal quality standard is our benchmark. Next. And everything else, it seems like it's been a long time, but it's been a lot of work done. So everything that thinks impossible, but we're doing something that's never been done before. We're building a program from the ground up and, but we're thinking that is very solid. The step that was taken and the ladder that we have created so far can be good for many, many communities, starting with Lake County. Thank you.
All righty. Well, before I dive in, I.
She's pulling it back up. There you go.
All right, next slide. So before I dive into what we're doing on a local level, I just really wanted to shine a spotlight on all of our developing partners and I just really appreciate you being here today. No program is successful on its own and we just really appreciate all of the efforts for developing this program and bringing this program to Lake County. I feel lucky every day that I get to work with partners who increase the safety of Lake County and not just Lake County, but communities throughout the state. So thank you again, everyone. So speaking of partners, Supervisor Pyska came to NCO about four years ago with this grant opportunity that she knew would benefit Lake County. She knew it would increase the safety of her residents here. And like Jay said, it's a grant that has never been done before. We're truly building the ship as we sail it. And so as we know, Lake County is one of the most vulnerable regions in the state. And in the last decade, more than 60% of our community has been impacted by our devastating wildfires. The threat is real, it's ongoing, and we no longer have a wildfire season. As we know, these wildfires happen year round. So proactive, community-driven action really truly begins with home hardening. More than 90% of homes lost in wildfires are due to ember intrusion, not direct flame. And so with home hardening, we really focus on ember intrusion. I think most of us here know that our hot embers travel up to three miles. In fact, we were just talking about that earlier. And so this home hardening program really reduces the risks by focusing on ember intrusion. Next slide. So when homes are hardened collectively, they slow the spread of fire. So when we first got this grant, we did a field trip with our partners and we toured 11 different communities throughout the county. And ultimately, the Kelseyville Riviera was chosen. To implement this cluster strategy, we really needed a neighborhood that had tight population density. Some of the other reasons why the Kelseyville Riviera was chosen was due to not just the vegetation in the community, but that surrounds that community. This community also has vulnerable exits in and out. I think anyone who's driven through this community really understands that. And in fact, we were just talking about a tree that we plan on taking down. It's in dying condition and if it were to fall over the road, there are several residents that wouldn't even be able to get out at all. This area also is, has not burned in the last decade with the other 60% of our community. And then every afternoon, those high winds kick up off the lake. So we considered one of the most vulnerable areas in the community. So we chose this to be our pilot site. And next slide. So we've been in construction for a year and these green icons signify the homes that we have already finished hardening. And so you can see we have two little clusters that are already starting to form and that resiliency is really starting to grow. Next slide. These pegs signify the homes that are currently in development, whether they're in construction, in the assessment phase, or they're starting to go out to bid. So you can see here now this cluster is continuing to grow. Next slide. These are the homeowners who are interested in being a participant of our program. So every time a homeowner calls us, we put them on an interested parties list. We add them to this map and this is how we select our next homeowners. In fact, we get that question a lot. So we look at this map and we decide homes that will continue to grow and intensify that cluster resiliency strategy. Next. So in this last slide, it shows all of our homes that we have and you can just really visualize this cluster resiliency strategy that's already being created and the impact, the bigger impact that it has in potential. And so this map currently has around 300 homes. So you can really see what impact this could make whenever we finish hardening 500 homes. Next slide. So the difference in community resiliency with that map is very substantial. So with our first year, we really considered it a big. So with our first year, we really considered it a big learning curve. We hardened 24 homes and every home is different with different vulnerabilities. And so every home has been a learning curve. So we anticipate now that we have a lot of those kinks ironed out and processes set in place, we are moving at a faster capacity and we plan on hardening at least 50 homes within this next year. We currently have six in active construction and as you saw on the map, we have 10 in development. So what does our program offer? So if you live throughout the county and even beyond, we've helped a lot of different communities develop their own program. You all are welcome to give us a call as you go through your home hardening journey. We are happy to answer any questions, hand out resources, or even talk about different measures that you can do on your own home or different resources and applications. If you live in the KRC area, we offer free detailed home assessments and these are incredibly individualized to your home. They take roughly about two years, I mean, two years, two hours to conduct and they put, they give us this really beautiful report of all of the different vulnerabilities that your specific house has. So if anyone lives in the KRC area and they want that to take place, just give us a call and we'll make sure to put you on that list. And then of course, this program offers the funding for the home hardening activities, especially for our vulnerable households, as most of the work that we conduct is done for free. So let's take a look at all the key home hardening activities this program offers, but also some of the education that we give our homeowners and we encourage every homeowner here in Lake County to conduct. With our economic climate as it is these days, we understand that every dollar has to stretch even further. But ironically, a lot of the low budget or even free activities that you can be doing happens to combat zone zero or the most vulnerable parts of your home. We're always going to encourage people to work on their zone zero defensible space. Ultimately, CAL FIRE would love to see that 100-foot of clearance, but we understand that lot sizes are small and we can't always do that. But the most vulnerable part of your home is that first five feet circumference around your home. So if you have any branches that are near your roof or bushes up against the side of your house, in fact, that's what I've been working on the last couple of weekends, is transplanting my rose bushes further away from my house and installing landscaping in that zone zero, or the hardscaping in zone zero. We also recommend, if you are on a budget and you can only do one thing, it would be your vents. So a lot of our homes were built in a time period where we had quarter-inch vents or even dryer vents that are plastic and no longer have the flapper, what's inside your dryer vent, lint. And so if you think about all of those embers, they're going to find all those little nooks and crannies of your home. And so most of these activities really combat the embers that could cause your home to ignite. So if you have the ability to swap out your vents on your own, they're a very economical option. We encourage non-combustible vents at a one-eighth inch. Again, thinking about those dryer vents and all those little nooks and crannies that the embers could intrude. We always still encourage folks to swap out their window screens. We live in a beautiful area where we have hotter days and cooler nights, so we're leaving our windows open. And so if embers were to blow up against those vinyl window screens, they would melt and create an opening straight into your home. Another item we encourage is the green reflective address plaques. Every home that we touch gets one. If you had a house fire or your baby was choking, those minutes really count and you want to make sure that your first responders can find you. Some of the mid-budget items are enclosing your decks. A lot of folks have leaves and debris under your deck, so if you're not able to enclose them, it's best to at least clean them out and make sure that those embers can't combust from underneath. If you can enclose your deck, it just wraps your house and protects it that much more. Attachments such as handrails, fencing, and gates should also be non-combustible. Gutters and gutter covers are also really important. What's right next to your gutters? Your roof. And as we all know, our roofs are incredibly vulnerable. So if we can keep those clean of debris and add gutter covers, it's that much more safe. Garage gasketing is one of the items I would have never thought about before we started this program. I've got gas cans and paint and combustibles inside my garage and I also live in Cod Mountain where we have frequent earthquakes, so my garage door doesn't shut all the way. So I have these nice little gaps on the side. So I, that's a project I plan on tackling. If embers were to blow inside my garage, there's things in there that could combust. So something to think about, I'd love for you guys all to go home and just take a peek at your garage door and see what kind of vulnerability it has. Some of the higher budget items includes non-combustible siding, enclosing of your eaves, those non-combustible framed double-pane, double-tempered windows, and then obviously the roof replacement, if you have that ability. So before we start to end this presentation, I just really wanted to share some of the really great resources that are out there. We, we get a lot, asked a lot of questions about just different information that people are seeing online and we want to make sure to send people to the CAL FIRE website. They have the most updated information if there's any kind of confusion. This page is one of our particular favorite pages. If you click on any of the red icons, go ahead, next slide. The red icons indicate different vulnerabilities in homes. And if you click on them, these pictures pop up, so it's really fun and interactive. You can kind of see this before and after of what's safer. Next slide. And if you're not as techie, this website is great. This Home Retrofit guide can be printed out. You can walk around your home with this guide and spot what vulnerabilities you have in your home. And the readyforwildfire.org, Jay brushed up on it a little bit. Hot button topic is our homeowner's insurance. And this is a really great resource to see what kinds of activities you can be doing on your home to not only reduce your homeowner's insurance, but keep it as well. So feel free to check that website out, always has really great information. Next slide. We have a local website we just revamped, ncohomehardening.org. We talk about different materials to be used on your home. We just talk about home hardening in general and we give updates about our local program. We also have a monthly newsletter. If you don't want it going to your inbox, you can check that out on our website as well. Next slide. So this is our contact information, we're always available. We have a team of seven and everyone is really seasoned. They've worked very closely with CAL FIRE and OES to understand the home hardening efforts. So please give us a call. But before I end this presentation, I really just want to leave everybody with one thing to keep in mind, that wildfires are a solvable crisis. With the right strategies and proactive policy and community engagement, we can reduce their frequency and their impact and home hardening is really just the start of that. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anything else to answer? Did you have anything else to finally add?
So the beautiful part of this is that, look, we started working about two years ago and you see all the knowledge that she has. And now that is embedded in your community. One of the greatest part about this program, it called me at retirement, was to empower your local groups to be self-sufficient and do this. And I feel like a proud dad right here just watching my kid play the piano to the mic. So wonderfully, all the knowledge that Deanna has and she's conveying to her team belongs to you now. So that's a great part of this in here. And thank you Supervisor Pyska for having the foresight and jumping right away to the opportunity to be part of this program.
Yeah, I was also going to mention that now we have, you are the leading experts. Jay, you've been an expert in this field for a long time and now you've built this here in our county in Deanna at the helm. Like you are a subject matter expert, your team understands everything. You are working with manufacturers on the development of new products that's going to help with all of these home hardening initiatives, make them easier for people, make them more accessible. But the other piece is the zone zero piece, which, you know, Jay's, you've been working on this for a long time at the state level. But now we have contractors who are also experts in this. So if anyone is interested, it is one of the easiest ways to protect your home, your lives, and your community is to make sure you've got that zone zero space around your home. And we have the best resources ever here, working in our community. And we just celebrated our first anniversary this month, right? It was last June that we finished the first home and we had a big celebration and here we are one year later. So I'm just, I'm just so happy at everything that's happened to get us to this point and then the next few years where we're going to be rolling this out even more.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I want to thank the home hardening team and Supervisor Pyska. C-SAT came through to do a tour of Lake County and you were one of the highlights. And I think they walked away really intrigued by the program and I'm sure Supervisor Pyska has elaborated within her committee as well about all the work that she's done. So I appreciate the time spent and appreciate learning a little bit more about what you do. I do have two questions. One is, what is the average cost per house for the rehabilitation to get it home hardened? And then my second one is a very long-term question and Supervisor Pyska kind of alluded to it. This is a pilot program. With the unfortunate status that both the state, especially after the Palisade and Eaton fires and the federal government sit, is there a chance of being able to continue it once this gets drawn down for all the work that was anticipated with the first grant? So those are my questions.
Yeah, that's a good question. So currently we're averaging about $55,000 per home and that includes the defensible space activities. As I mentioned, every home is a little bit different. So we have some homes that are a little bit cheaper of homeowners who have been really proactive. And then we have other homeowners who don't have the physical or financial capability of doing much on their property. So that's about what we're averaging currently. I can't give a whole lot of detail, but we did just recently apply for another home hardening grant and I'll let Jay kind of elaborate on the funding, but we definitely see more funding coming down the pipeline.
Yes, great question. So let me address the state first. We are piloting till 2029, however, it's a new bill, AB441, that is, will try to make us permanent or at least extend us even more time to be part of this. And that bills, all of the bills that we have last year was AB2469. Gives also the directive to the state to provide funding, legislative funding to our program to bring it to this level. In the federal world, right now, things are changing quite a bit. However, the hazard mitigation grant program is not being discussed right now as a possibility, but things are changing daily. So right now, we're just marching along to what we have and planning in the future. So the application of a notice of intent for the next month is to do more work in Lake County has been submitted by NCO. And our goal is that by the time this month is finished, that we have right now, then you have the next part of the program coming. But, so right now statewide, we have till 2029 for this program. The way this bill, the creators was written, created as was written, is that every five years needs to have confirmed for us to keep it going. So unfortunately, every five years, we need to go from the assembly to, or the legislature to be renewed and that's how it's designed.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So there's about 5 million homes in California that are in the high fire threat area. About 90% of them were built prior to 2008. So the state's target and Jay's work is how do we get those homes addressed across the state? So that's what we're piloting here, hoping to expand the pilot project eventually and really look at all those homes across the state.
Supervisor Owen.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. So you said that the average home, the retrofit for that is approximately $55,000 per home.
Correct.
And is that 100% covered by this grant?
Yes, so for households that have a lower income, all the work conducted is done for free. And then for the higher income households, they can have either a 10 or 25% share of cost.
Okay, so it's on a sliding scale, but a good port, most of it is usually covered?
Correct.
On all of them, okay. And then is there, how much was this last grant, the pilot grant?
So this last one is 22, was 22 million.
22 million? And then are you doing all of the homes in that one particular area or is that available to other people in other areas throughout the county?
So currently, while we build this cluster resiliency strategy, we're focusing in on 500 homes within close proximity of each other. So anyone who wants to participate needs to be in the Kelseyville Riviera Association.
Okay, so it's not, not available to, say, Anderson Springs?
Correct, yeah, not at this moment.
Okay. Let me see. And then, so you had mentioned that if somebody wants to start a home hardening project, say for instance, Anderson Springs, they, they would have to pay for the cost themselves to have their homes done in another area other than this area?
Do you mean the homeowner themselves?
Yes.
If they were honored to harden their own home?
Yes.
Yes, so at this time, they would have to cover that activity on themselves, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Supervisor Sabatier.
I do want to follow up with that and I really appreciate that there's hope. I wasn't sure how much hope is left with the financial status of both the state and the feds. So I really appreciate those comments because $55,000 is a lot of money per house and I'm glad that we're able to utilize that to uplift some of the homes here. I don't want to speak out of line, but if you're going to do this work, please correct me. Check with your insurance because there are insurance companies that do provide some reimbursements to a certain degree, but you have to front the cash upfront in order to do the work if you're in Anderson Springs and you may be able to get some reimbursement. So it's definitely not 100% guaranteed, check in with your own insurance, but I know that there are plans out there for those that are not within grant opportunities such as the home hardening program that is being run currently. And so there's multiple ways to do it, but I am concerned about the overall cost because not everybody's able to front-load that amount. And so again, glad to hear that there is hope for a 2.0 version of this, to keep expanding it further and further.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, just for your question first, the area selected because we have to work with, we have, we work with FEMA, the great amount of the money that we have from FEMA. So an area has to be studied from all the biological parts. So that's the first part to get select, gets done, once an area gets started. So when you see the area, KRCPL, plus a buffer of, we went up to three miles to look for endangered species and all that. So in order to get FEMA money, we have to select an area and then work in there. Our goal is to move it away from that area, so we have more money and start expanding on those areas as we can. The, at the end of our program, we'll provide the property owner a report of what was done at their house. So the Safer From Wildfire program that is managed by the California Department of Finance, Department of Insurance, they ask the insurance companies to provide a discount for what they have done to the home. And Deanna is going to provide this very detailed list for them and the property owner will hope to the, will go to the insurance company asking them, this is what is done in my house, we know that Safer From Wildfire exists, what is this discount they're giving for vents or whatever was done? And that's a great link right there. And also if they want to go for the wildfire per home designation, we're going to help them to get there. It'll be the property owner decision to be there, but also they will have that and that'll give them the ability not only to maintain insurance, but hopefully one of the state shop around as well.
Okay, well, thank you. And that's, that's a huge benefit to those people that could have some relief from the insurance companies. That's, that's amazing, that's phenomenal. And I'm so glad that you guys are out there doing this work. So it sounds like this grant here, the 22 million, will probably be spent in that zone. So it sounds like this grant here, the twenty-two million will probably be spent in that zone area, uh, and you've probably got plenty of homes to take care of that. So when you get another grant, would you be looking for another area to be retrofitting then at that or, you know, home hardening?
Yeah, I know for myself and, and Jay and a, a number of our partners, we are always on the hunt for different grants and they could be home hardening. I know we've been talking about expanding to do vehicle abatement, lot mitigation, there's a, a ton of fuels projects that are going on out there right now. So we are always, like I said, on the hunt to looking for other various grants. Um, as far as the home hardening grant, like Jay mentioned, we do have to do that EHP review prior to award and that can take up to a year or even beyond. And so that was a really good opportunity for us locally to do our program development while we waited for that EHP review, but it's always something to keep in mind as we start applying for other home hardening grants is that is really truly the first step.
Right, a- and that's what I was getting at actually was, um, what we could do to get other areas into the pipeline is what I'm asking for the next grant.
Yeah, uh, yep. No, I was just going to say, yes, absolutely. Our goal really is to continue to expand in other areas throughout Lake County. I know the city of Clear Lake and the city of Lakeport are very interested in having a home hardening program, um, within their city limits. Um, but yes, um, this really ultimately, our goal was to create a cookie cutter program that we could expand to other various communities.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And right now from the state, we have Prop four, um, the climate bond that it was passed in November last year. Uh, there are a hundred and thirty-five million dollars assigned for home hardening. Uh, it's not as specific to our program, but we've worked in real hard to try to get all of those. That will help us, uh, expand the program within the county here, uh, but also to other counties during the state. So we're hoping that those, uh, monies or at least partial money will come to us and we keep moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, so just for transparency, there are some homes that can't be done in, in the pilot area and that's because there can't be any outstanding code violations. So if someone built a deck without a permit, they can't be part of the program. But you do do the zone zero work and figure out how to do some things that are allowable, but those are the constraints with FEMA. Um, and then again, it's homes that, um, well, and the historical homes too, if they're, if they're too old, that's, um, been a difficulty in the pilot program as well. That's one of the, why, one of the reasons, um, the Riviera's was selected is they're all mostly the same age and they're mo- they're very similar homes. And so it was really a way to have a successful pilot. Um, homes that are built after two thousand eight don't need this. So like in Anderson Springs, those are mostly all new homes. And so that would be if, you know, if you wanted to do some work there, it would be mostly focusing on.
That was just an example, yeah.
Uh, yeah, so it's targeting those homes, um, prior to two thousand eight that are fully compliant with all codes, really important. But there's also a lot of legislation that's happening right now, both at the state and the federal level. So Congressman Thompson's working on a bill, um, that if you do home hardening, you'll get taxed, you know? There's a lot going on there, but there's a lot of different ways, um, that this, we're looking at being able to implement this, um, in other communities, not necessarily with this exact program, but the goal of everyone, um, across the board is to harden communities and harden homes. The insurance crisis is nationwide, except in Alabama, because Alabama used FEMA, um, FEMA money to harden their homes against hurricanes. It was only a ten thousand dollar, um, investment for each of those homes, but there's no insurance crisis in Alabama anymore because they've taken away the risk by hardening the homes. So that's why so many people, agencies and legislators and everybody's working on trying to figure out how we lower this risk community-wide. So that, uh, there are going to be a lot of options in the near future, not just this pilot program, but this pilot program is designing the path forward for rolling out throughout a community.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the public and see if there's anyone that would like to speak on this item. Anyone on Zoom? I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion in case there is. Any, uh, final thoughts?
Well, I just want to thank you both for coming. I know we, um, intended to do this, uh, last month for wildfire preparedness day, but, um, this is our, at our one-year anniversary of our first home, so I think this is just as fitting. And I know Jay, you traveled quite a distance again, as usual, to be here and we always love having you, so thank you so much to both of you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next on our agenda is six-point-one-two, a presentation of food policy council activities and strategic plan. B, consideration of food policy council bylaws. C, consideration of food policy council MOU with the Lake County Community Foundations and D, reopen application process to fill food policy council members. Supervisor Sabatier, this, you sponsored this, so want to introduce?
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, we have Rebecca Harper from the Farm Bureau coming up as well as Greg Damren from Blue Zones. As you'll remember, Blue Zones has been the leading agency for this committee. Um, this committee has been hard at work for...
Too long.
I'll leave it at that, too long. Uh, but we are very excited to present to you what has been accomplished so far in hopes to really start gaining steam and, uh, taking action in the upcoming months and years. And, uh, Rebecca Harper will be presenting our, uh, our status and our actions so far.
There we go, perfect.
And that should be the latest version.
Yes, great. Yeah, I noticed there were some formatting issues with the earlier, um, version. So anyways, we have, just as some background, um, like Bruno said, been working at this food policy council development for quite a while, um, which stemmed from, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Bruno, Bruno's participation in the California Women for Agriculture Ag Venture Program. Um, he left with some questions about how we could build a more food resilient community from both the consumer and producer, um, standpoint. So we started tossing around some ideas and recruiting some of the folks who had been involved in similar efforts in the past and other folks who might be knowledgeable in the area. And so as part of that, you know, Greg kind of got, got looped in similarly to the way that I was and we started working on this. So it's been a while. We've been mostly tossing around ideas up until this point, but now we're really at a crossroads of developing a clear purpose, vision, you know, getting our bylaws set in stone and then having a strategic plan to make sure that this effort, um, is sustained into the future and doesn't fizzle out like previous iterations have. So with that, um, you should have the bylaws as well as MOUs and other documents attached to the agenda. I'm not going to read them to you, um, but I will just cover some highlights. So purpose and vision, the purpose of the food policy council is to advance sustainable solutions for Lake County's local food and farm economies so that growers and eaters can thrive. And so, you know, when we talk about food, usually we talk about it from a consumption standpoint. Um, and so a- as the food policy council, we've really tried to emphasize the importance of, of producing local food and making sure that we have sustainable market channels for our producers to sell their products through and that also, um, you know, locals can benefit from the food production that does occur in Lake County. So the vision for the food policy council would be that Lake County has a resilient and abundant food system where nutritious locally produced food is accessible to everyone, fostering self-reliance for our community. So as was mentioned in the presentation that just concluded, uh, Lake County is a pretty isolated community. And so not only does that put our citizens at risk, you know, during times of emergency like wildfire, but, but it also, there's a food component to that. And so we want to make sure that our citizens have as, as best of a chance as we can provide to be, to be sustainable if, if an emergency does cut off, you know, access to, to outside resources. And so that's definitely a big component of that. The other part of that is Lake County is a, what I would call a resource abundant community. So in, in terms of monetary resources, you know, of course we, we have some low-income, uh, affected areas, but, but we have a lot of land. And so we can capitalize on that by, you know, working on some initiatives and, and other things that will make it easier for people to grow food in Lake County, um, and to get their products to, to markets and be successful. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. Yeah, so here's just some of the values of the food policy council, um, kind of buzzwords that were thrown around throughout the development of our strategic plan. So the Lake County Food Policy Council will be essential for addressing food insecurity, supporting local agriculture, improving public health, fostering collaboration and building resilience. Its establishment represents a proactive step towards a healthier, more connected and sustainable food system in Lake County. So instead of working on all of these issues individually in silos, you know, addressing food security on its own, addressing, um, public health on its own and supporting local agriculture on its own, we, we kind of tried to take a holistic view here and look at how they're all connect, look at how all of these different, um, kind of pieces of the puzzle are connected and how we can work on them simultaneously to bring the most benefit to each area. So some of those key values include resilience, knowledge, trustworthiness, fairness, partnership, connection amongst our industries, um, innovation and relevance. So, so again, we, we have lots of opportunity in Lake County and so we'd like to see how that opportunity can work for us. Great, so as I previously stated, Lake County is an agricultural county that has experienced some decline in agricultural productivity and related industries, particularly around food production. So the Lake County Food Policy Council aims to turn this trajectory around with an innovative and comprehensive plan for our food systems. Um, you know, focusing on climate resiliency, disaster preparedness, economic development, cultural and health priorities. So, so like I said, lots of different, um, aspects at play here. So this little timeline here kind of highlights some of our goals as outlined in the strategic plan. So those goals being to strengthen local food infrastructure, to build food systems workforces, enact supportive zoning and policy. And so these are three of the goals, at least to me, that kind of stand out, uh, as part of our strategic plan. So here's a little bit of a timeline. As you'll see, it doesn't have specific dates and times, but, but kind of step by step how, how that would look for us. So build necessary equipment and infrastructure for local food production, processing, distribution and food waste recovery. Um, one of Bruno and I's initial conversations was around what we could do to promote local, more local food production. And my background is in animal science, so I, I told Bruno, you know, if you want more people to raise beef cattle or goats or, you know, whatever meat production there is, there has to be a way for it to process it. And quite frankly, you know, we have lots of wonderful local, smaller scaled USDA licensed facility, but there really isn't anywhere that you could have, uh, meat processed on a larger scale. And i- you know, if you're, if you're going to get into ag, you have to be able to have those economies to scale. And so to me, that, that's a really big part of it, is developing, uh, local food production and processing facilities. So that's kind of step one. Um, but with that, you have to also grow market channels, right? If we can grow that food and we can get it processed, but there's nowhere to sell it, uh, that's not going to work out. And then we'd also like to provide support to growers and food and farm workers, expand school-based food production. That's an interesting one. School-based food production, um, is an area that we do have some growers in Lake County connected in, but there's certainly more opportunity to utilize, um, schools as an area and also hospitals, Angela's here, uh, as, as market channels for some of our agricultural products. And then also expanding food systems education opportunities. So this idea, you know, I, I don't know if you've heard, there, there's lots of statistics, um, but you know, only one, one to two percent of, of the United States population is involved in food production and that's a number that's changed drastically within just a couple of generations. Um, and so really looking at how do we close that gap? How do we inform not only our youth, but some of our older populations kind of of the power of food and supporting your local ag economy? And then finally, strengthen partnerships and networks. So the idea that we're stronger when we work together, right? I think everybody is connected to food and if you eat and wear clothes, you're connected to ag. So making sure we have, we have good networks and partnerships in place. I think since the formation of the council, we've already done a really good job at getting connected, so, uh, o- only up from here. And then also strengthening food access infrastructure and policy. So that's an area that actually I, I've learned quite a bit more about through the food policy council's life so far and that we actually have quite good, um, infrastructure for food access in Lake County. And so working with the gleaners and other community organizations that work specifically in that area, you know, there's opportunities for continued partnership into the future. And then also really important is, is food policy. I think also going back to some of the initial conversations that we had was like, okay, we want to support farmers and ranchers in Lake County and we think we're an ag-friendly community, but does our policy reflect that? And so really kind of digging deeper and having some tough conversations at times about what being an ag-friendly county looks like and, you know, not just talking the talk, but walking the walk in terms of ag-friendly policy. Next slide. So again, more of those goals, um, use zoning and planning tools to facilitate local food system development. This really ties into that, uh, policy component of being ag-friendly in Lake County. Foster strategic collaboration to achieve strategic plan goals and actions. So we've built a system of partners and, and have a good network, now how do we put it to work? And then ensuring adequate long-term support for food policy council. So if, if you've been involved in county leadership, um, you probably know there's been multiple iterations of similar projects and, um, we don't want to be just another iteration, we'd like to be a longer-term, more sustained effort. So also conducting evaluations and measurements to track progress. Um, if, if we can't measure our success, uh, then, then we've got some issues. So we want to make sure that we're set up to do that throughout the pro- throughout the progress that we've made. And then keeping the community and decision-makers aware and informed. I think I see this a lot, there's so much good work that goes on in Lake County, um, but if it's not communicated, you know, a lot of our citizens don't have any idea of, of all of that good work that's happening. And so we want to make sure that we're sharing the work that's, that's been made so far, um, and, and the work that we're going to continue doing in the future. Great, so strategic plan implementation. To ensure effective and timely execution of the strategic plan, we will confirm a fiscal agent for twenty-twenty-five grants and contracts, which is kind of outlined in the documents you have attached to the agenda. Identify long-term backbone organization for the Lake County Food Policy Committee and then establish an MOU with Blue Zones Project as the lead support for, for the group for now. And then appoint Blue Zone staff to Lake County Food Policy Council membership and support role. So these are all of those items, um, that are going to get us set up to carry out our mission in the future. Bylaws, pretty similar to other, um, committees. The council will have members that include representatives from various organizations and interests acco- across Lake County. There will be co-chairs appointed by the council members and an executive committee that includes co-chairs, designated staff and standing committee reps to guide council activities. So the makeup of the council as, as currently written in the bylaws, which you know, there's, we, there's been some discussion regarding potentially changing this in the future to make sure that we're able to meet quorum, um, and, and continue the group, which has been an issue in other committees. But the, the committee will be made up of eleven total members, which will include a chair, a vice chair and secretary, which will be appointed each January. And then the chair facilitates the meetings, the vice chair fills in as needed and a secretary that records meeting notes. So pretty standard, um, nothing really outside of what you've seen with other committees. This, this goes over the, some of the nitty-gritty of the bylaws. Um, again, very similar to, to other committees. I won't go into this too much unless you have any questions. Um, but yeah, this is all outlawed, outlined in the bylaws. So memorandum of understanding with Blue Zones Project. Uh, we've been very fortunate to have Greg and Blue Zones Project support from really the beginning, um, of our conversations. And as you all know, Blue Zones Project has been such an asset to Lake County and it's been no different as part of the food policy committee. So the Lake County Food Policy Council will develop an MOU with Blue Zones Project that will formalize Blue Zones Project role as the lead support agency and, um, will allow Blue Zones to continue with staff coordination and support, strategic guidance. strategic guidance, and operational assistance. And then once the MOU is executed, you know, this role would be recognized in an official agreement. I kind of sped through everything. I hope it was thorough enough. Greg is here to provide some more details kind of regarding the bylaws and the strategic plan, which Blue Zones was kind of the primary on. So yeah, if you have any other questions, happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
Want to add anything else?
Yeah, I just, I want to say thank you so much for letting us come here. To answer the earlier question, we started in September of 2023. And you know, previous iterations of these efforts follow the typical lifespan of nonprofit fiscal sponsorship. You'll get a grant that allows for the development of the council, that grant sunsets, and then there's turnover. We tried to do something different this time, and that was to establish this link to a committee connected to this body. And also, Blue Zones Project, it's not a nonprofit. We're a company. And through the generosity of Adventist Health, we're able to provide probably over $100,000 of technical assistance and in-kind dollars to do this process. Our council, of which we have a number of representatives here today, Tammy Alexe, I don't know if I can pronounce her name always correctly, Angela Frazier from Adventist Health, and then we have Catherine Vander Wolf, Commissioner. And we have a number of other organizations represented. The idea with this was to create an organic process, let the team, most of whom have worked together for many years and know each other, come into an action-oriented and problem-solving initiative, and then develop structure. We invest, Blue Zones invested in a pretty substantial development plan. Great timing, right? Because if you look at the federal line items of many of those grant sources, those are, we don't know what the outcome of those are. But anyways, we're working through that. And it just reemphasizes the importance of sustainability and planning and working together in a changing environment. So that's the gist. So Bruno, are questions?
Did you have something else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just add, one of the questions that I've received from members of the ag community, but also members of the public, is how is this different than the Ag Advisory Committee? And so I think that's an important thing to discuss. Ag Advisory Committee usually is used in response to issues. And as Greg had mentioned, we really want this to be a proactive effort to look at some of the longer-term questions and use funding opportunities to our benefit, and really focus on food and local production in Lake County. So just wanted to mention that is a question that we have received, and I think there's some very obvious reasons why it's a different effort.
Thank you for clarifying that. Supervisor Sabatier, and then Supervisor Owen.
So I'm sorry it took so long to get to this point, but we've had some great discussions, made some great relationships with a lot of different agencies that are very interested in making this happen. The food policy out of that in the past, the NCO, Mendel Lake Food Hub has come out of that. A while ago, the Co-op, the Food Co-op came out of this. And other iterations created long-term projects and solutions that have assisted and made impact on Lake County, and we hope to do the same. Our strategic plan, in my personal opinion, is very much shooting for the moon. But if we can get anywhere close to what we're looking to get and achieve, we will be in a better position. To me, food was the important choice to focus on. There is so much that relates back to food and why we need to increase our food production. This does not touch vineyards, this does not touch cannabis, this does not touch other types of agriculture that is not food-specific related. And we are seeing a decrease, and also an aging population in those that are involved in food production, not just here in Lake County, but throughout the country as well. And the more we can position ourselves to be more resilient and self-sustainable, the better off we will be in the future. And so I think this is exciting. I'm really glad that I, my very first conversation, Rebecca completely swerved me into the left direction that I was not heading in the original place. I said, I want more farmers, and she said, well, how about more markets? And that's when Blue Zones fit the bill. Blue Zones is pledging with other businesses and agencies, such as Adventist Health, Conoco Unified School District, Foods, et cetera, to focus on health and food. And we are making those connections right now. Adventist Health is currently seeking food to provide to their employees. And if our farmers were available to provide that food today, they would be buying it directly from them. We've made some of those same connections between the gleaners and the farmers that sit at the table as well. So I think one of the most important pieces, of course, today, we hope that we can get the approval of the bylaws, but is the MOU with Lake County Community Foundations. I thought we needed to butter up Lake County Community Foundations in order to get them to say yes to become a fiscal agent for us. Greg and I met with them, we buttered them up for 30 minutes, and we asked, and it took 10-second conversation. They said, that's why we're here. We're here to be fiscal agents for the needs of Lake County. And so the way that the relationship would work is they are not getting paid by the county, they are not getting paid by the Food Policy Council. They are going to work with us on which grants to go after in order to achieve the goals of our strategic plan, work together on how to provide that grant funding to contractors, or farmers, or others in the community to be able to achieve our goals. And just basically working as partners. And I think Lake County Community Foundations offers an opportunity for us to do the work without asking staff, who is always strapped within their own capacities, to do more. And so to us, that was a win-win situation, and build a new relationship as well for sustainability for this program. So I think that, thank you so much for doing the presentation. You did amazing. Thank you both, thank you all the team that's out there. Really appreciate, and those that aren't here as well, we really appreciate them being at the table.
Supervisor Owen?
Oh, I did just want to add to Bruno's point. You know, I think this is a very timely effort. In the last couple of years, we've seen neighboring counties, Sonoma County fighting Measure J, Solano County dealing with the California Forever Project. And although it wasn't intentional, you know, I think that there's a culture that we want to establish in Lake County, and that certainly, that this effort certainly takes a step in the right direction. Something else that I also wanted to speak to, like Bruno said, there have been many previous iterations, and that's something that our committee has discussed. Like, you know, are we wasting our time here? Is this going to fizzle out? And my response to that has been, well, you know, maybe in the past, we never quite had the right people at the table. And so it certainly feels like we do this time.
Okay. I want to say that this is pretty exciting. And I'd heard about it just not too long ago. And this is, I'm pretty excited for it. So what I was, my question was, was you have, you're putting together 11 board members. Have you selected them already? Or do you have like seats for particular things? Like one for schools, one for the inputs, for the districts? You know, do you have them already in place? Or are you looking to fill those positions?
Yeah, in September of 2023, there was, there were applications made to the Board of Supervisors, and then those were filled. But we've had some organizational turnaround, and we're also just looking at categories. So there are many of the categories that you mentioned are there. We don't have a regional district-by-district representation at that point. And we're, Bruno might be able to speak more to this, but we're grappling with making sure you have a sustainable number so that you can get a quorum, because this is voluntary, versus packing it with such an extensive.
Sure.
Yeah.
And just to add to that, one of the asks also is for us to clear the slate so we can get new applications, because there has been some alternates that have been showing up, and we want them to be a part of the team, such as Angela, who has joined us in the last two to three months. She's been amazing. We want her to be an official member. No offense to Don Smith, love Don Smith. He was very helpful in creating the process that we just talked about today. But we want to clean the slate, get new applications, and start fresh with this new action plan and strategic plan in place.
If there's not anything else, I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this.
Good afternoon, supervisors and Food Policy Council. This is very exciting. I am, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled to hear this as a concerned Lake County resident who is committed to sustainability and food security for my neighbors. I want to help. And along those lines, I want to let you know that your goal three, Food Policy Council's in your strategic plan, enact supportive zoning and policy. As a member of the Lake County General Plan Advisory Committee representative, I'm keenly interested in this topic. And I hope that the Food Policy Council is also interested in a parallel matter, and that is preserving agricultural lands and keeping them in production. Specifically, Lake County is updating its general plan and the local area plans. And some of those, some of that work involves recommendations to rezone and to expand community growth boundaries. And so your support along those lines would be greatly appreciated. In support of your goal 4.4, to get the word out on the good work that you're doing, I have a few suggestions. It would be great if your council agendas included an email address to suggest future agenda items. It would also be helpful to post your minutes and recordings of meetings, or the link to get to those recordings, because we need more hands and heads to work together for food security for our community. And that'd be great, because you are doing exciting work, and it sounds like you are going on to the next level. And let's bring more people along with you. And with that, I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Marco.
All good suggestions. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from public? All right, come on up, yeah.
Tammy Alexe, American Red Cross, and part of the Food Policy Council. I just want to say that I'm the one that always raises my hand and says what? Come on. Emergency food. So I just want to make sure that you know that we are working on emergency food also, and it's addendum number five, and just leave it at that. I didn't want to go away without mentioning it.
Thank you.
Not forgotten.
Joan?
Joan Moss. I think Kelseyville is a really good example of farmers. Kelseyville Grade School has a garden. And I think our legal division could offer stimulus and incentives and take some fines away if people can build their own garden. If people can do something besides get into trouble. If they can put hours in to a garden and learn. I think that we could be at the forefront of new ideas. Giving people incentives and rewards for changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. All right, come on up.
I'll make this as brief as possible. I just wanted to, number one, thank this board for hearing this and for this team for doing this. Adventist Health is keenly invested in making certain to provide what the earth has to provide here in Lake County to its population, which includes its employees in addition to its community. So I'm pleased to be a part of that part, especially as you'd mentioned before, and look forward to the outcomes.
Thank you. Did we get your name? Sorry about that. For the record.
Angela Frazier.
All right, thanks. And any other public comment? On Zoom? Kyle, if you can unmute.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle Bill. I just wanted to, I'm also a part of the Lake County General Plan Advisory Board, and just wanted to also acknowledge and, you know, encourage, if it hasn't already been done so, but tribal representation engagement when it comes to topics especially like this. Tribes do have resources or potential infrastructure that could benefit, but also recognizing, engaging tribes to learn more about the lack of infrastructure or the resources necessary to grow our own food. Food sovereignty is definitely something that is well-known within tribal communities, but you know, some tribes in Lake County aren't able to grow food from the land because it's been contaminated by, due to mining. And so some tribal communities aren't even able to grow food safely and consume it safely. And so understanding those impacts, I think, is important so that we can ensure that the resources and the focus can also go toward those communities that have been disproportionately impacted by colonization and capitalism, and how we can work collectively together to ensure that tribal communities are also represented and heard, and also a part of the sharing in resources, because we are still constituents within the county, and we are invested in the general health and welfare of everyone here as well. So I think it's important just to engage, ensuring that engagement on just one, to respect tribal sovereignty when it comes to ensuring that we're engaging tribes in a respectful manner when we're doing these things as a collective, because we are a part of the county as well. So I just wanted to voice that, and I appreciate the initiative, and look forward to the, you know, the work that will come as a result of this committee.
All right, thank you for that. Any other public comment? Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Annette Calamoni is our representative from the Lake County Community Foundations, where we have an MOU. But I just wanted to respond real quick. Appreciate Kyle Bill making a statement. I will say that I have failed in one aspect of this Food Policy Council. We do have a tribal membership seat. We had filled that seat, but we have not been able to engage in the way that we wanted to engage. This is one of the reasons we kind of want to hit reset for a certain different number of seats. I would like to reopen it up so that we can find somebody who truly can engage with us and provide that. And I'm hoping that maybe, Kyle Bill, I know you do great work, especially related to healthcare. This is very much related to that, and hoping that maybe there's incentives in there for you to join us and be able to participate in our future meetings. And even then, it's open for the public. Anyone and everyone can join us and be a part of this. But I appreciate the comment, and that's one of the aspects that we all want to do better on.
All right, Annette?
Hi, this is Annette Calamoni, and I'm just so appreciative of Bruno and the Food Policy Council for including Lake County Community Foundation in this plan. And we look forward to working with everybody to make sure that everyone in Lake County is fed. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. With that, closed public input, and if there's no one else. All right, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure and identify, we do have two versions of the MOU with Lake County Community Foundations. The one we're looking to be approved, to have approved is the titled MOU Food Policy Council and Lake County Community Foundation, RV2, Revised 2, with the date 6/25 on it. What we changed is in Section 10, instead of going off the head, I'm going to make sure that I am talking about the correct section. On the section under signature, which is Section 10, it should now state, "This MOU is executed by the undersigned, duly authorized representatives of the Lake County Community Foundation." And instead of the County of Lake, it says, "and the County of Lake Food Policy Council." And within the signature page, instead of it being County- And within the signature page, instead of it being County of Lake and Lake County Community Foundation, it is now the County of Lake Food Policy Council and Lake County Community Foundation. Your signature will count as the Food Policy Council since we are a committee that has been approved by the Board of Supervisors. Just wanted to provide those changes that were provided by County Council so that we approve the correct item. And I believe, based on at least one of your last questions, it was uploaded on Friday where the revision of this was provided. Is that correct, Joanna? Or I could always just say as amended and that would cover everything.
That would.
And so with that, I'm going to go one at a time. I move to approve the Food Policy Council bylaws as presented.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
And then I move to approve the MOU with the Lake County Community Foundations, Version 2, as amended.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
And then I move to reopen all applications and clear the membership of the Food Policy Council.
I second that.
Mr. Chair, just for further clarification, the reference to clearing it would be vacating the current membership positions of the Food Policy Council.
Did I miss, and for the chair to sign on the last one?
It could be, well, on, on Item C, your board can approve it and at, at its option, one option is for the, once the, for, once the, because my understanding is the, the Food Policy Council has approved this agreement.
Yes.
So certainly a representative, a proper representative of that council can sign off on that because this signature field does identify council. But at the same time, the board all has, can also approve it. Now, that would probably be the cleaner way, which, which then would be consistent with just the motion that, that just passed.
Okay.
Because the board has given its approval and then it looked, it, it appears that previously the Food Policy Council with its current membership has approved the document as well. So they can sign off on, the, the member of that council, proper member of that council can sign off on, under that item.
So it sounds like we're good to move forward and I move to vacate the list of membership.
And I second that.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? All right.
Ask me to present and then kick me off. Wow.
We're looking for your application again.
You could be so lucky.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, so you want a short, we'll take a quick break before we do calendars and we'll come back in five minutes. All right, we're back from our break and we're going to do calendars. Whoever wants to go first?
I'll go.
All right.
Let's see. Last week was kind of a quiet week, but I went to, on the 23rd, I went to a field trip with the Upper Lake High School out at the, the reclamation area, Middle Creek area on a, a drone, or it's a field trip regarding a future drone study project at the Blue Ribbon, it's a Blue Ribbon approved project that is being done by Pacific Union College with local high schools. Also last week, attended a co-managing the land and natural resources seminar that was sponsored by Habemotol. And basically it was regarding tribes, the county and state agencies, talking about a future co-management agreement for the Clear Lake Watershed. I attended a coffee event last Saturday with the Lakeport Mayor and that was it, that'll be it for this report. I'll wait till next week on what I have pending.
Okay. Tomorrow I have a meeting, LCOE. And Thursday, geothermal. I was going to go to the Kelseyville High School Awards night, but I've got an eighth grade graduation, so sheriff's covering me for that Friday. I'll be at the Middletown graduation. A lot of graduation parties all weekend, but the Eli Stage Hoedown is happening Saturday night, which unfortunately I'm not able to make this year. And then Monday, back with CIO Parker, and then Tuesday's board meeting.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just want to highlight a couple of things and hopefully I'm not stealing thunder from others. Couple of things about the COC, I think I've mentioned before, we received 1.5 million dollars. Actually, I've been engaged with Vice Chair Rasmussen on how to spend